All right, it is 4:00 PM and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Work Session in order for September 3rd, 2024. Welcome, everyone. We're going to start with item number one, clarification of agenda items. Hearing none, we're going to move on to item number two, information packet discussion, August 22nd. August 29th.
I wanted to, sorry, pull out and just comment a little bit or possibly ask for additional questions of Councilor Mo and his memo about the pop-up rail.
Sure.
For— Thank you for writing it.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, we have an echo, that's why I'm—
Yeah.
Pausing.
Technical difficulty for a second there, but our city clerk's all over it.
So, I just wondered if there— and Mayor, please tell me if this is appropriate or not appropriate since it's a work session. I was just curious about your overall impressions. What you laid out in the memo was really good as far as, you know—
Fact.
What are the knowns? What are some of the unknowns? And surfacing those. I would love to know from you some—and perhaps Council Burgess as well, because she's been spearheading this—about some of the things that maybe we need to be aware of as we move forward, things that we should have on our radar, if that's—if there are any things.
Yeah, thanks for asking. It was really exciting to see this new train technology that's running off batteries and they're beautiful trains and they—they are very quiet and we even had a chance to drive them, so it was sort of a fun field trip. But they are a new company and so I think that's just something that as the people arranging this, lots of due diligence is necessary to make sure that this—this company, you know, can deliver on this—this proposal. What we saw onsite on the test rail was the trains that we would potentially get. So we know that they exist and they're operational and I understand that there's two sets in existence. We also saw the demountable platforms that would be used, they're accessible. The last proposal that we reviewed as far as where the stops or platforms would be, they do engage with pretty key points with the University of Iowa and the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics. Specifically, the stops would be right at the Art Museum downtown, near the College of Public Health, which would serve the hospital campus and then the new hospital campus. And so I think encouraging engagement of the university because they—you know—it serves pretty important pieces of their key infrastructure. So—and getting their employees and staff onboard, pun intended, would be really important for this to be successful. I think I mentioned in the memo also that maybe we have this piece of information, then we need to sit on it until we get the bus rapid transit study fully delivered, as well as we can, you know, on—pull out the old transit study too and have three really different possibilities to examine all at once. So, any other things that—I mean, were—you read between the lines or were curious about?
Actually, I'm interested since this would be—I mean, this has to be a joint effort, you know, without much detail, but just what seemed to be the impressions from the other representatives, the other municipalities?
Yes, so we had the city manager from Correville, a city manager from North Liberty, as well as a counselor from North Liberty join us on this trip. I know in Correville, much of the rail line goes through residential neighborhoods and they're already talking to their constituents about what that might mean for a rail line that's pretty dormant right now, would get increased use. And so I think the fact that these trains are quite a bit quieter than the big diesel engines people are used to is helpful, but that's, I think, a primary concern for them. We did not talk about who's actually investing or spending money on it. I think that's where the—you know, the proof is in the pudding if they actually want to put money on it. A lot of the infrastructure improvements would be outside of Iowa City too, so the infrastructure improvements need for safety crossings. So, it's absolutely going to require multi-jurisdictional coordination. I should also say that EC Cog, Johnson County, and the airport was also included in this. Now, the airport would not be included in the preliminary route. The first sort of proposed route is just from downtown Iowa City, Burlington Street to the—I guess the—I call it the—the North Liberty or Correville, New Hy-Vee or right there by the new hospital. A future possible stop could go up to the airport and the airport is very excited about that, but they really can't get engaged until that sort of next effort is—is possible. But they were—the people who were there were very excited about it as a possibility.
Cedar Rapids Airport, just for those—
Yes, Cedar Rapids, Eastern Iowa Airport. Thank you.
And you mentioned that we need to continue to engage with the university. They are not—they did not participate in any of these—
No, no, they were not present at this—this field trip. So, yes, anybody who's listening from the university—
I was gonna say, do we know has think—sorry, Greater Iowa City engaged with the university?
Yeah, no, definitely. We've had—at the earlier stakeholder meetings, we had the General Counsel of UIHC, Joe Kleiman was there. I know Laura McLaren from the President's Office came to another stakeholder meeting. So, they're certainly paying attention and keeping track of it. I think—I think Better Together has also kind of directly started talking about the budget with UIHC in particular, so I think they're pretty aggressively saying you need to buy into this.
Thank you. I was—I know that Greater Iowa City is involved to a certain extent, but yeah, it's being driven by Greater Iowa City.
Better Together.
Better Together.
Which really, you know—
Thank you.
Yeah. They're intertwined. Thank you so much for going, Councilor Mo, and for your memo and for updating us and thanks for asking about it, Councilor Alter. I think, you know, the other thing I would just highlight, having been, you know, sort of trying to talk about this for a few years, is that a thing that is very appealing about the pop-up metro opportunity is that it is intended to be like a rolling feasibility study, right? So—it is intended to be a sort of program for a period of time for a set cost in which we can try to have enough, you know, seasons, like three years, to really evaluate use, should we wish to make some different or additional investment. But I think that's, you know, not looking at it as needing to pay tens of millions of dollars to implement a train that's going to take 10 years to get off the ground, I think is the most appealing thing about this opportunity.
A living pilot.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I—I think it's understood that for us to operate this, we absolutely have to coordinate. We would need to create an organization and that's something that I think when we have all three of these proposals in front of us is probably the time to sort of say, what is the shape of this multi-government body group look like? But it's—it's inescapable for something like this, that we have to do that.
Actually, last question is, since I know that Crandic owns it, are they amenable? They're open to this conversation? They're really—
Yeah, it's all hearsay for me, but I've been told multiple times that they're very excited to have usage of this portion of the rail.
I know that the budget that was somewhat delayed—we were waiting on the budget for a while—was because of exactly what Crandic needed, both on what it would cost for some of the improvements for the at-grade crossings, as well as for like leasing the tracks essentially. So, that has all been hammered out in what we should receive for the budget.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
And we'll wait on the budget item, that's on that work session packet. Anything else from August 29th? Hearing nothing. We're going to move on to item number three, University of Iowa Updates, USG. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Just a couple short updates tonight. Our first Student Senate session begins tonight with new senators from fall nominations joining us next week. We're excited to welcome new members of our undergraduate body to USG. The Senate is voting on legislation that establishes an ad hoc committee that addresses changes coming to the structure of student organizations. The committee will not include leaders from other student organizations and is restricted to USG senators and a few executives. Their restructuring focuses around establishing new guidelines for how student organizations receive funding and their eligibility for a new system of categories. The Governmental Relations Committee will elect a chair and we are excited to see who will lead with us and GR Director Amin. And other than that, there are no new updates at this time. Happy ISU Hey Week. Yeah, and Ava, if you would like to introduce yourself again.
Yeah, and for those of you who weren't here last week, my name is Ava Martinez. I'm a second year at the University of Iowa and I really look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you all. We're on to item number four, Preliminary Fiscal 2026 Budget Discussions, and we're going to invite our city manager Jeff Ruin to lead us in this discussion.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I thought to help us with this discussion this year, we revisit some of the January work session slides that we presented. So thankfully for you, I've truncated these a little bit. We're not going to go through 73 slides, but I thought a little bit of primer, focusing really on the topics that were in the memo would be most important. So, again, all these slides that I'll show you tonight are the exact same slides on Alter that you saw in the January 22nd presentation. And what we talked a lot about during that presentation were some of the financial headwinds that we're facing. As I've noted in the memo, those headwinds are still with us today and for some, maybe even more pressing than they were a year ago at this time. So I'm going to take a minute and just walk you through—I'm not going to go through all the details on the slide, we can circle back to them if needed, but just to remind you, we're still in the phase out of the commercial and industrial backfill. At its peak, the state was paying us $1.5 million to backfill loss of property tax from 2013 legislation. This year that we're in right now, fiscal year '25, we expect to get a little bit over $600,000 of that backfill. For next year's budget, which we're talking about tonight, the fiscal year '26 budget will be down to just over 300, and then by fiscal year '27, we're—we're out. That may not seem like a big number in the grand scheme of our budget, but every hundred thousand is roughly equivalent to one staff member. So, every year, that's just one more thing that we have to overcome. We talk about rollback trends a lot. Again, a rollback refers to the percentage of your assessed value that is taxable, okay? So, if you're a commercial and a property—a commercial property owner, you pay taxes on 90% of what your property is worth. So if you have a million-dollar commercial property, our tax rate is only going to be factored into 900,000 of that, and that's static. The residential rollback, which now impacts both single-family and multifamily residential, fluctuates every year. The state sets a rate that is statewide, it's not unique to any metropolitan area, city, county, anything like that. And that's what this graph on the—on the screen indicates. So you can see there was a sharp decline in the year that we're in, that 54% all the way down to 46%. Again, if you own—I'll just use round numbers—if you own a $100,000 home, what that means is you're paying taxes on $46,000 of that home, okay? So, the lower that goes, the better it is for the homeowner, right? They're going to pay fewer taxes. And the formula the state uses in—in some ways offsets evaluation growth. So we all saw great valuation growth, or across a lot of Iowa, there was great valuation growth. This was a way—this is a—a tool the state uses to help kind of temper the impact. But it—it does lead to some difficult budgeting times for us. So as you can see in the green text above, every percent drop at the same—if we keep the same tax rate, is about $1.1 million in lost revenue that we otherwise would have received. So this drop was very significant for us and unfortunately, we won't know what this percentage is until about November is when the state typically relays—releases that, late October, early November. You can see historically, it doesn't move a whole lot year to year. The 8% last year was—was not very common, so I would expect that we'll stay somewhere close to that 46%. But as that goes down or up, it'll certainly impact our budget. We talked about the multifamily piece, so this shows at the top right of your screen there, that back in fiscal year '14, if you owned a multifamily building, an apartment complex, you paid as a commercial property, you paid 100% of that—of that value as your—as your taxable value. And we're all the way down to—to where there is no distinction between the two now going forward. That's kind of what that blue box shows, is—that's how the state merged it into one. So, that was a big blow for Iowa City or any city that has a large stock of multifamily buildings. And now what it means for us, if you just focus in on this last bullet point, that 81% of our total assessed valuation is now subject to this rollback that the state sets every year. So, there could be very tough times if there's a large swing particularly downward in that—in that rollback. So, one of the—one of the things we always look at are building permits, and we do that because it's a good leading indicator. We see a lot of building, construction activity today. We know there's going to be a lot of added value to the tax base in two to three years when that comes on the tax rolls. And you can see through the—the mid kind of 2010s, we had a nice—nice peak where we were consistently, you know, right, over $150 million in new building permits. Certainly, we saw a big decrease at the peak of COVID and we've been slowly climbing out of that. Last year was a very good year at 275 million, but there was really two projects that—that made that number happen. That was not a kind of a uniform growth across the city. We are now—we have eight months behind us and we are tracking this year to probably be maybe 125 million. It's hard to say what the last four months will produce, but probably around the same average that we had kind of during the peak COVID years. And that's—a—that's a little bit concerning as we look out two to three years. It's actually a kind of mirrors—a mirrors a—a trend that we've talked about. If you remember one slide from tonight, this is probably it. So there's a lot going on here, but what I'd encourage you to look at are the red bars, okay? The red bars is our—that's our taxable value. That's not all new value that comes into the city, right? There's a taxable component of that, so how much of that tax base is actually taxable? And you can see that it's been pretty darned flat the last few years. And the—the valuation change is this green line, those are the percentages on the bottom. And you can see, just looking back, last year was 3.61%. That was a pretty good year for us in recent history, but as you—as you go back to the earlier slides here, you can see we consistently performed above that 3.61. The past two years were actually negative. So, in the memo, I think I averaged the last three years out and I said we're—we're going about 1% a year in taxable value. And that appears probably where we'll be at next year, just based on it not being a reassessment year for—from—for property tax purposes. We're probably going to be looking at about a 1% number. Again, we're looking backwards a couple years ago. We're really looking at this 2020, '21 construction year coming online, and that's why we think it'll be pretty low, because there's just not much new growth that'll be added on there. So I'm going to skip through the property tax reform slide, but just to remember that the 2013 legislation wasn't it. We are now in the midst of the 2023 legislation and we still have a couple more years to phase in those lost library and lost emergency levies that are no longer with us. This fiscal year '25, we did—we phased out about 36% of those levies and we have a couple more years to phase out the remaining parts of those levies. So, all in all, it's a loss of $2 million once those levies are completely gone. And again, we get about two more years to fully phase those out. On top of that, you're always going to—we always have this slide in there, there's always some cost that spikes on us, whether it's a chemical cost, whether it's fuel costs. This past couple of years, it's really been our insurance cost and this is a—not something unique to Iowa City, it's not just because of one event, I think it's just the environment that we're in nationwide, where insurance costs are going up considerably. And over the last two years, we've added about $850,000 in expenses just related to growth in our insurance lines. So, those are things that just have to be accommodated for. So as we get the squeeze on the revenue side, we always talk about the—the pressure on the expense side. So I focused a lot on property taxes because that's where the pressure point is. This slide shows you what our general fund revenue sources look like. So, 67% or roughly two-thirds of our revenue are property taxes. And you can see from all these other slices, even the larger slice is just miscellaneous, it's just a bunch of little slices combined there, there's not one of these categories that can jump up and make up large ground compared to property taxes. So as we see property taxes becoming stagnant, that's going to tell you that our whole revenue picture is probably going to be fairly stagnant as well. One of these—the—the red piece of—the of the pie here, other city taxes includes hotel motel and our utility tax. And I wanted to talk about utility franchise tax because that came up in our last work session, it's something we talked about during the January budget session too. We're currently at 1%. The state law allows cities to go up to 5% and you can see where some of the peer cities are in the state of Iowa and locally here. It is—that can be increased by council action, unlike a loss which has to go to voters. You all have the ability to increase that and every percent you increase that, the revenue—we count on about $1 million. You can see that fluctuates, it's a little dependence on weather and how many—you—what utility consumption looks like across the—the city, but about $1 million per year. And we're forecasting that we'll be recommending to you moving this up to 2% to fund the remaining piece of the fare-free puzzle that the parking rate increases are not going to be covering. So, again, parking rate increase that was in this fiscal year is expected to generate about 1.5 million for fare-free and this is the other million that staff would be recommending to you. So you'd see Iowa City move to a 2% here.
You mean like one—more percent will generate 1 million?
Correct, yes. So we talked a little bit about, you know, why property tax matters on the—on the revenue side. On the expense side, just a reminder that we're a very labor-driven organization. Most of the services that we provide are very labor-intensive. So, on the expense side of things, three-fourths of—of every dollar goes to personnel. And those two things are tough because we know personnel expenditures are going to increase usually between 3% to 5% per year, depending on wage settlements, depending on insurance costs, pension increases that we may not control. So when you've got your largest revenue source at two-thirds of your revenue mix stagnant and your personnel cost going up at 3% to 5% per year, it's only a matter of time before that catches up with you from a budget standpoint. When you put actual numbers on the expenditure side, you can kind of see what I'm talking about here. This compares fiscal year '24, which was last fiscal year, to fiscal year '25. You can see personnel expenses went up about 4.5% and the total budget for expenditures went up 4.5%. These were all kind of a wash. And if you think about—if you're faced in a budget situation where you have to make cuts and you really don't want or you can't afford to cut staff because of the service delivery implications, you're really working with very small dollars to find whatever budget gap needs to be filled. So, that's one of the challenges that—that we foresee ahead with this next year. I think we're going to have very flat property tax revenue and we all know that the demands on services continue to grow and those personnel expenses are going to continue to grow. I'm not touching on the other—the enterprise funds very much, I'm happy to—to cover those, but just a reminder, there was a water rate increase, a wastewater rate increase, a recycling rate increase with this last budget. We try to do these incrementally, not to have a huge impact on households. If we are going to pursue a utility tax, we want to be mindful of what we're asking from all these other expenses that will also hit household budgets. And we want to be mindful of property taxes too and not to lean too much on those at a time when those evaluations are increasing for many of our property owners. So, we will of course try to balance those out. The last slide, sorry, just had the landfill and the parking increases for those user fees too. So, that's just a little bit of a refresher. Usually what we like to do in these work sessions is just kind of let you talk. We'll always try to make sure that we can fund council priorities, but want to make sure you fully understand the budget environment that we're entering. And as I said in the—in the memo, I wish I could say I'd really just seen this for—for fiscal year '26, but when we consider the—the phase out of the levies, the loss of the backfill and some of the building activity that we're seeing this year, we might have similar challenges in—in fiscal year '27 and fiscal year '28. So, even more of a reason to be prudent this year so that we don't put ourselves in a very difficult position for those two forthcoming fiscal years.
Our work session list included a conversation on revenue broadly. Is that a second conversation that we're going to have, or do you anticipate this conversation including that? Because I think that in the conversation about revenue, I had assumed that lost would just be one of those pieces that we would throw on the table and I didn't see any mention of it in this.
Yeah, yeah, we could certainly—I can—I can show you a lost slide here that I just had—had taken out. Lost is—a—is—a—is a different kind of revenue source compared to the utility tax. One, you've got to get voter approval and there takes time to build that case, whereas utility tax, you can act as quickly as you—as you wish to. On that, let me unhide this slide and see if I can figure this out. Yeah, so there's an example of cities that use lost. I won't go through there if you have questions, we can certainly do that. But lost would take some time to build that public support and you really have to think about what you want to designate those lost funds for. While you don't—most lost will come with a sunset. I know a lot of these don't—don't have sunsets, but most lost would—across the state would have a sunset and generally easier to get the voters to approve something when they know they can hold you accountable for that sunset. So you've got to be careful not to fund too much of your operations when those dollars will go away, because the last thing we want to do is say fund 10 to 15 staff members delivering a service and then the voters five or 10 years from now to say, we no longer want to pay that sales tax, and then they're going to have a—a big budget crisis or you're going to be faced with cutting a—a major service in the community. So that's the only thing you need to be careful of with the—with the local option sales tax.
Just trying to remember, I know there was a proposal in the state legislature that would make it a state law that a certain percentage of lost would have to go to property tax. Did that end up passing and—if so, at what level?
It did, 50%. 50% has to go to property tax relief and that can be a dollar-for-dollar offset, or if you forecast a property tax increase, you can also factor that in. That's what the City of Des Moines did. They made it clear to their voters if a lost wasn't going to pass, that they were going to push up other levies, like their debt service levies for more road repairs. And so it—it wasn't a dollar-for-dollar offset, but it was lost instead of property tax increase.
Can you remind us which—which of these communities you think would be most analogous to what we would see in terms of income? I vaguely remember like 9 million—
Yeah, on our own, probably Ames would be the closest. And I say on your own because if—there's still a component of the state law to say if contiguous cities have a lost, then there's a revenue sharing model. That revenue sharing model leans heavily on population, so if Correville and North Liberty as contiguous cities also pass the loss, Iowa City would see its revenue share grow quite a bit. So probably closer to 17 to 20 million if all three cities had a local option sales tax. But just Iowa City, about that Ames would be as—as close as I would guess.
Kind of piggybacking off of Councilor Mo's thing and talking about revenue, you know, what other kinds of things? We've talked about utility, and I don't know if this is all for today, but I mean, just sort of in general, looking at the budget, in my mind— all for today, but I mean, just sort of in general, looking at the budget, in my mind, as we look at some of these things and the impacts of the Iowa GOP's property tax deform, that we have to, you know, I see this as a choice some between, do we keep our city up to the standard that Iowa City has been? Do we let it fall down? Or do we look for as many different ways? And I think, at this point in my mind, everything should kind of be on the table so that we can then figure out what mix provides the most equitable way to maintain the operations and services and things that we provide, facilities and so on and so on.
Yeah. So again, this is just looking at general fund. But the, the utility tax, we can't increase the hotel motel tax rate anymore. But certainly adding additional hotels in the community long-term could help bolster that number. Otherwise, you're really working in these smaller fees. So you could look at, you know, you're really nibbling around the edges here. But you could look at what we charge for programming, right? Parks and Rec programming. And we could try to recapture a higher percentage of those costs. Right now, we have a philosophy where we treat, we try as much as we can to keep all that programming as accessible as possible by keeping prices either down or free. A lot of cities will charge more for some of those programs. So all those user fees that we look at could be a part of this. There's really not a whole lot else in terms of tools in the toolbox. Cities in Iowa are pretty limited from a revenue generating standpoint on what they can look at, or what they can, what they can bring in. Other cities may have unique opportunities that we don't, right? Some cities may have casinos that can bring in lots of dollars. We don't have that. So other, you will see some other revenue mixes in other cities. But by and large, it's property taxes, local option sales tax, utility tax, and hotel motel are the big ones.
Can you help us understand what property tax relief actually looks like? Is that something along the lines of, you know, when it's passed, we reduce our levy?
Reduce the levy.
Okay.
Yep. So let's say, let's say we get 10 million from lost. If we do a dollar-for-dollar reduction, then we could take $5 million off the property tax rolls, if you will. We would essentially downward adjust some of our levies and pay, pay cash through the local option sales tax instead of some of the, it could be debt service, it could be operational costs that, that the levies are providing for.
Would that prohibit us from then raising it back to where it was before in future years? Or is it related?
No.
So it's just at the implementation step?
It's at the implementation.
Interesting, okay.
Is any, you know, one unique feature of Iowa City is we have the University of Iowa, who does get fire service, for example, from the city of Iowa City. Does, is that a big enough slipper to be represented as intergovernmental or miscellaneous? Or is it?
Yeah, it probably falls in intergovernmental. And it's probably about 1.7 to 2 million, is that? Roughly in that ballpark. And so there's a formula that we rely on to set that. It's a formula that's been in place for several decades. But it's essentially, looks at the amount of square footage that the university has compared to the entire square footage of the, the building stock in Iowa City. And that ratio gets factored into our budget for the fire department, and they pay the corresponding amount. So I think the formula is pretty fair in the way it's calculated, but roughly provides a couple million dollars per year for us.
So with lost, we know that you typically try to find something that the voters would be amenable to, to go to vote, to have it enacted. We haven't had our strategic, our, our--
Strategic plan refresh.
Yes, yeah, our strategic plan refresh. And I think, you know, at least for what are some of the things that we believe that the voters will be moved by, I think we have to wait for that. Of course, I know that housing is, you know, something that we have all been talking about. We are, we need all types of housings, the million-dollar homes as well, as well as the workforce house. And then truly affordable homes for individuals. So at least for the, the, what would we even consider would, would be that thing we would take to the voters, I think we need to wait at least for that. I'm not opposed to continuing the conversation on lost. One of the, I think, questions that I do have is related to, I think the overall budget when it comes down to our program, and are we social services and CDBG? Where are we with, and I know that's Tracy's department, are we seeing a decrease there? And will the city have to kind of sort of plan to supplement it? Because I know that we've not really seen large hops in the--
Yeah, you want to come up, Tracy?
--of the funds going up.
I don't think we had good news about a month or two ago.
No, we've seen stable funding to some extent. CDBG home took a huge hit. I think we took a nineteen percent hit. So it was down to 345,000. But your CDBG public service, the money that we provide to aid agencies comes from your CDBG, CDBG budget, not home. So I'm going to say level for now. There's no guarantee.
Sure.
Changes every year.
Although we do continue to see high needs from the community, and we're not able to meet them. So, so I just wanted to at least mention that the social services funding sources, although that's just one path of how we do some things, that is also stable. And, you know, with this, what we see before us, I'm not sure how we're going to bolster that up to meet increasing needs.
The building permit, I mean, we're talking about increasing the amount of taxable value within Iowa City. It's a long-term thing we should probably strive towards. It's not an immediate fix. Can you, I think I've seen this chart before. Can you maybe just help us understand where in that blue bar is just sort of your everyday residential construction permits versus the sort of big projects, the big student housing projects, the Chauncey or whatever? I mean, 2016, is that--
Yeah.
--the Chauncey? Like, is that, is that's a substantial portion of this?
Yeah. So, so, yeah, you're right. 2016 was, was a record year. You had the Chauncey and the Rise kind of come online at the same time to drive that. If you look at 2023, about forty-one percent of that is attributed to two projects. So the Myrtle Riverside project and the Hickory Hill senior housing, I believe it's called Featherstone. You take those two projects out, and it'll be roughly sixty percent of that, 275 million. So, you know, 2022, it looks like we got up to about 150 million there. You had the Gilbane project at just over 50 million. So almost a third of that 2022 number is one project. And we've seen a lot of that over the last several years with the, the large-scale student housing. 2021, even, you know, even these lower numbers, that's the year the Tailwinds Nest project came online. And that's, that was a $34 million building permit. So we have been very dependent on those large projects over the last several years. This year, last year, we finished 2022 with 54 new single-family home permits. And we just hit 54 in August. So we're kind of sitting year-to-date right where we finished 2022. So we'll be a little bit ahead from a single-family home standpoint. But if you, you know, just take an average building permit value of 500,000, 400,000 for a new home, you can see it's, it's not going to get you very far up the spectrum there.
One of the things that just popped into my head as Jeff was talking is, given the way that Iowa City is essentially, I mean, we're at a place where to invite people to come in really is about density and building up. Because we don't have the vast amounts. I mean, we've just annexed way on the far west side. But we don't have tons of neighborhoods to just go here, right? So I think that that's just a good thing to keep in mind. If and hopefully when we get people coming to us to talk about things, we need to think about, you know, that, that, sorry, people coming to talk to us, developers coming to, to pitch us and to say, you know, what seems to be a good fit for Iowa City. I think that in some ways, we need to keep that in mind about, our situation is different than other cities in terms of what a good bang for our buck is, how does it fit into the city, but that it may not be sprawling and say, we're going to have an instant neighborhood or an instant retail, large strip mall or, or otherwise. We are looking at density. We are looking at building up rather than perhaps out, right? Is that a fair assessment?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying completely, but just--
Yeah.
Definitively.
Not all growth is good growth.
Right.
And it shouldn't be growth at any cost--
No.
--because there is a cost to growth. And as you're describing, a sprawling neighborhood on the edges could up in the short or long term costing us more when you think of the service extensions that we have to bring to those neighborhoods. So, yeah, you want to make sure that you're developing with that financial model in mind. And one way you do that is through density. You try to serve as many households as you can in a short, in a smaller geographic area, and allow those numbers to work a little bit better than they have maybe historically for a lot of cities.
Just got a smattering of thoughts here. And I'm going to try to make them all make sense in some sort of coherent dialogue. The first thing that I kind of think of is just the immense frustration that I have that we are forced to engage in a type of redistribution, redistribution of wealth from a regressive tax back to property owners when the largest majority of, you know, regressive tax, like a lost, if that's something that we are to consider, do not necessarily impact those communities as much as they do others. So that's very frustrating. Understanding that and the broader situation that we're in, I think we, we need to very strongly consider it. At this point, for me, it somewhat seems as though, again, just speaking for myself, it's not an if we do it, it's a when we do it, and a how we do it. Just because there's the numbers that you're, you're saying, we, we just can't, it doesn't make sense. We have to make it make sense. So I'm very interested in figuring out how we can, you know, if council chooses to pursue it, make it a palatable discussion for the public. Try to reduce as much as possible the regressive nature of loss, which can be, you know, using those dollars for investments in social services, or, you know, something like to that effect, right? Whether that's, you know, making that a contribution coming from, or coming to our affordable housing dollars come from lost and offsetting funds. I don't know how the, the accounting will work, but that's something that would make it better in my eyes. And of course, knowing that that's, that can't be the only thing. We have a lot more needs than we, we have, you know, tools to secure funds. For me, I think this also really reinforces the importance of our deliberate selection for what happens at 21 South Lynn. That tax revenue, whenever it hits, is going to be really important. And so I think maximizing that as much as possible. Again, I think, I think everyone's on the same page, maximizing the tax revenue as well as we try to maximize and balance that tax revenue with the community needs. So just really brings that up, at least for me. And then with regard to a comment that Councilor Alter made, you know, I, I've thought this periodically since we had the conversation. But revisiting accessory dwelling units is something that keeps coming up and is not probably going to have a huge impact on taxable value, but can affect the affordability of the community and can in small ways, you know, allow us to build in areas that we aren't already doing. So just expressing an openness to either reopening that discussion at some point or, you know, exploring other opportunities.
And Councilor Dunn, I agree, the frustration with this conversation is huge. And just to kind of, the kind of the historical and broader context, we're in this, and I, you know, because Iowa Republicans have decided to give a huge windfall to landlords, my property taxes will go up. If I have to pay a lost tax, I'm going to be paying and I'm going to be covering the profits. When you talk about rental properties in a city like Iowa City dropping 53% over the course of 13 years, that's huge. But we still have to provide the services. We still have to fill the potholes. We still have to put out fires, literally and metaphorically. And so, yeah, so I very much share that frustration. And, you know, that's why I think all things should be on the table, including, you know, our property tax rate, you know, to the extent that we can look at that. And, yeah, I don't have like a sitting here today and know exactly which is the right one. But I think we have to look at that so that our mix is as equitable as we can make it in a bad situation and a budget crisis that was completely manufactured by the party that controls both houses in Des Moines and the governor. And so it really frustrates me. And this, you know, this really chaps me in, in multiple ways. But I think that's important to know and to let the public know that we're not sitting up here doing this because we think that, we shouldn't even have to be having this conversation. If they'd have left things well enough alone, an income-generating property was, was taxed at 100% or even 90% like commercial property, we would not be having this discussion right now. We'd be talking about how quickly can, you know, we'd be having a permanent free bus. So we wouldn't happen to be, be looking at a 1% utility tax. And, yeah, no, I find myself extremely frustrated. And I think it's important for us to name the thing that is causing this, so.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And I just want to also put some numbers to that. If I'm recalling correctly, Jeff, we, we've lost out on $20 million plus in revenue because of, I believe it was the 2013 tax changes?
Yeah, I'd want to, I'd want to confirm that. But, yeah, looking at this slide, just on the multi-residential piece, over 11 years, we had estimated that at $20 million. And that's actual revenue.
Yeah.
That's not just taxable value, that's actual revenue.
Yeah.
I should probably give a shout out to our state reps at that time who fought against this, including Senator Joe Volcom, who represented my district where I lived. And was a, was a vocal opponent of this back in 2012, 2013, when it was being debated. And, you know, ultimately, he wasn't on the winning side of that vote. He and a few other Democratic senators that stood up against this. But probably should give credit where due.
I guess would like to ask you, Jeff, about, you know, our tax level increase or decrease. You know, for years, we've been like really reducing the tax levy. And I see here you give us comparison for the sale tax and the utility tax and everything. Can we have also comparison with as a city when it comes to tax, like levies?
Yeah. I appreciate you bringing that up because the answer is very nuanced. This is a very busy slide. But what it shows is, in the blue, is what our tax rate was for each individual levy in fiscal year 24 versus fiscal year 25. And we point out a couple things. You can see the library and the emergency levy that is accounted for in the blue column. And you can see it going away in the red column. And then you can also see what we call the 810 levy, or the general fund levy, went up to 8.4. When we say those, when we say the library and the emergency levies need to be fully phased in in a couple of years, that means the, the state allowed us to add the value of those levies to the general fund, which is why we could go above 8.1. But then they make you bring it back down to 8.1 in a couple of years. So if you were to add the total of these, you'd see it was 57 cents. And you can see we didn't add 57 cents there. We only added about 40 cents. So you'll continue to see the 8.4 go down to 8.1. And to answer your question, 8.1 is the cap. So for general fund purposes, we cannot increase this levy anymore. Same with transit. We cannot increase our transit levy anymore. The tort liability, we can only increase, and you can see we did increase that a little bit with this budget, we can only increase that with the amount of eligible expenses that fit that tort liability category. And then so these two levies are, are no longer. We can increase the employee benefits levy a little bit. We have some capacity there to raise that rate. But those dollars can only be used to fund employee benefits. And then the debt service, when you look back at how we decreased our tax rate from roughly 2012 to 2021, 22, 95-plus percent of it was the debt service piece of it. We really worked on, on bringing-- We really worked on bringing this rate down. You can see we ticked it back up this past year because we weren't, we knew we couldn't pay for, with cash as much for some of those improvements, we're going to have to borrow more. You're probably going to see that continue to happen as this 810 levy drops, you're probably going to see us continue to bump up the debt service levy because we just can't, we won't be able to pay cash for some of those capital improvements as much as we had in the past. We're going to have to use that cash for operations and then borrow more, which is really kind of sad on an unintended impact of the property tax reform. So we don't have a lot of ability to raise our rate. We can borrow more money if that's the will and we could push a little bit more onto employee benefits, but outside of that, these levies are all capped.
I was going to ask, what is the cap for the employee benefits?
It's completely, it's recalculated every year based on the amount of expenses that we have. Do you recall kind of roughly how much capacity we have left from a rate standpoint?
[inaudible].
Okay, so roughly maybe about $2 million left. So you can see that we're moving off the rate and we're talking about, basically, this rate of 3.344 generates about 14 million. So we have maybe another 2 million is our kind of on-the-spot estimate to drive that up a little bit. You could, and in theory, so what we're saying is basically, we're paying for some of the benefits out of the general levy.
That's what I was going to ask.
So you could bump up the employee levy and then that would free up some dollars in the general fund levy.
That's exactly what I want to ask, is like now 14 million is enough to pay the employee benefit or we are taking from the general fund to do so?
Yes, we're still taking from the general fund or enterprise funds, yeah.
And if we increase it to the maximum, we can free those.
You can, yep. There's other downsides and we would give you some cautions for doing that. Most notably is once you, once you max out every levy, you really put your back against the wall to deal with unintended consequences or unanticipated situations, excuse me, in the future. So this is a little bit of a relief valve for us going forward. And you'll also probably see Moody's not react well to that. Once your, once your property tax capacity is met, that's when they'll really start to focus on perhaps downgrading your rating. So they always note the capacity in that employee benefits as a positive for Iowa City.
Is there is a way you can give me a number of like how much the maximum is would generate and how much right now we is using from the general fund and if we did not max out also?
Yeah, we could, we'd have to calculate that because it's not going to be evenly spread, but we could, we could let you know where that capacity would fall. We can provide that.
Yeah, I really rather just like see if we can generate some money and free some money from the general fund.
Yeah.
That would be ideal.
We've been talking a lot about the revenue side of things. I think part of this discussion, we're also supposed to kind of share with you our priorities on the spending side of things.
Yeah.
And I could jump into that, but I want to, don't want to cut anybody else off on revenue.
Good pivot.
I guess a couple of general thoughts. I mean, I think obviously, you know, the fare-free bus service is on my list. Things related to housing and affordable housing, from the development of new housing to taking care of shelter for the unhoused, all that whole gamut. You know, all of the services, you know, keeping the lights on, so to speak, in the city. And also looking at, you know, I know you had mentioned too that we've got bargaining sessions coming up. So making sure that we are maintaining to the best of our ability, the kinds of pay and benefits, that keep the best staff, that provide the best services for the best city in Iowa. And so those kinds of things are in my mind. I think if we have to talk about juggling on the spending side of things, to me, it's going to be important that nobody carries the burden. If there's a burden to be carried, that it be as shared and diffused as possible in these different places so that there's not one group or one thing that takes a crippling hit. I don't know if that's, it's a little vague, but I think at this point.
No, it's helpful.
But I mean, that's kind of, and so as you take a look at stuff and as staff is looking at these things, those are the things that are in my mind as I've been reflecting on this the last several days, so.
Yeah, I second that really. And also, I would like just to emphasize the importance of like really taking a bold approach of affordable housing. Right now, everybody talk about housing, the state's trying to figure out a solution for homelessness and our, you know, waiting list has been closed for Section 8. That's telling us like how many people now in the waiting list, that's why they close it. So it become really a huge problem in the city and we need to have a bold solution to it. I really feel like, you know, the, like, for example, program like Re3 Housing is a solution for this homelessness and we need really to figure out what we can do about it. Do we want a bond for that? Why not? I know that we don't have money because this is need a lot of money to start doing affordable housing, but we need to start right now to do something about this solution as soon as possible. I agree with everything else, but that would be my priority.
I'm just going to tack on to that since it's affordable housing. So we have conquered, you know, transit with the free fare, although there's more things, I'm sure, related to transit that we'll be talking about in the future. Climate action is something that we continue to be dedicated as a city. Great work from our staff as well as the commission that is working on that. Mental health is something that I still think that we are, you know, talking about. But affordable housing, as we know, as Mayor Protim just noted, we've closed our, you know, the, yeah, the housing applications. And we hear from people all the time of the challenges that they have to afford the rents in Iowa City. We also see the unhoused on the streets in our city in tents. And I personally believe that if we're going to be bold, we have to make a bold statement in writing through a commitment. And I would even go as far as to saying that we can make affordable housing a part of our CIP where we would have a number that we would always have going towards affordable housing. We're grateful for the HUD funds that we got, for the pro-housing, but we're going to, it's going to take a lot of more money to get us to where we need to be. And there are individuals that are living, spending way more than 30% of their income in this community.
Definitely. If I may, I know I was a councilor, but if I may, just, I don't want to forget my thought. Can I? Yes, I just want to say that we talk about like mental health, we talk about everything, but how like housing people is the start. If we did not house people, we cannot treat their mental health, we cannot do that, I think. That's why I think we should become really bold, we should just talk about like connecting affordable housing to any topic that the city is big about every day. We need a reminder in each city council meeting, somebody to remind us, oh, we have this number of homelessness, people like who doesn't have home, we have this much of people in the waiting list. If we start really just working aggressive, we're going to find a solution. I think, I doubt if somebody in this council doesn't like affordable housing, all of us wanted to do it. And I know that the fund is challenging, but we can start somewhere. And as the mayor said, we can have a goal and we just start small and just build on that one. Thank you.
So I think we, in the spring, talked about coming back to revisit a larger conversation about community safety. So I hope we can have a little bit of that this evening. Couple of things that I would just highlight from our strategic plan and conversations that we've had around the budget, particularly relating to the Iowa City Police Department and where we came to those, some of those really hard conversations starting in 2020 and since then. So we know that we're staffing up and filling the positions that had been open a few years ago. So in the conversations that I'd sort of pushed us on, two years ago, it was about using the money that was unspent on, on staff that now that money is being spent and so that's pretty locked in. And I think we need to be looking at what are our opportunities for ensuring that we're continuing to go upstream. I completely agree with you, Mayor Protim, that housing is a key component to preventing harm in the community, right? And mental health assistance, whether that's, you know, preventing the traumas that lead to worse mental health outcomes, whether that is ensuring that interventions when people are in crisis are the most supported and appropriate for their needs. And then even, you know, whatever we can do as far as supporting all the different sort of schemes of ongoing treatment for people who are suffering with mental illness. And I think, you know, I really don't want to lose sight as we're going into this strategic plan refresh, that one of our primary lenses is racial justice, social justice, racial equity and human rights. And that, you know, what kind of got us to that as a primary value in the most recent history was looking at racial disparities in law enforcement and how that has played out in other communities in particular and how we see it playing out here. So I just really don't want to lose sight of that. I know since 2020, lots of people haven't been talking about it in the ways in which we did then, but, and I know our study that we had every year isn't happening anymore. Do we have new data that we'll have as far as policing?
Yeah, we, as we went, we changed vendors, University of Iowa Public Policy Center's doing that workforce and I think they're almost done.
Great, so we'll be able to look and see if, if some of the things that we've been talking about over the last four years have actually improved the situation as far as disparities that we see and how we can track that against the demographic data in our community. But I think it's really, really important that we continue to invest in prevention, to invest upstream. I don't know where we are at in terms of our investment in mobile crisis intervention, for example. I know we added the second liaison. I understand the Johnson County Sheriff's Department just terminated their liaison. So there's certainly, there's certainly some things happening around that that I think we need to be really cognizant of and make sure that we're renewing our commitments. The other thing relating to that, as it may influence this, this coming year, is Johnson County just announced their revitalization of a commission that is, I think it's called the Criminal Justice something Commission, had been active in the early 2000s, I think resulted in a lot of the jail diversion interventions that were implemented in the early 2010s. And we know from the Johnson County Jail Needs Assessment that those interventions around, like if you look, starting in 2011, really have actually resulted in decarceration as far as at the local level in our, in our county jail. And so making sure that we are involved in those conversations and those activities so we can be actively learning from other communities that have effectively, you know, reduced their jail census and done that by implementing programs and supporting things, again, upstream before, before things happen so that people don't end up in jail and diverting out of the system. So, you know, mobile crisis response is something I've talked about a lot. Getting someone in the dispatch center who can more effectively triage is something that we've talked about. And I know there was some support in at least renewing those conversations at this time when folks weren't real interested in the budget amendments of the last couple of years. So those are the items that I wanted to focus on.
I wanted to say one boring thing and one interesting thing. The boring thing being, you know, the recent listening post that we did at the farmer's market. People, a lot of the questions were, my road's bad, signals, like, it probably doesn't need to be said, but like we have, that's a basic surface. Do I have a sidewalk? Do I have a street? Do I have? I just want to say that. Like that's something we have to provide and I don't think that we should step backwards on basic services and basic infrastructure at all. In the vein of prevention and the kinds of things that we could be investing in that, Councilor Burgess was just speaking about, the piece that I'm always interested in is which prevention pieces do we get the most bang for our buck? And I remember at the same time we were having that conversation, there was also conversations about data analysts. And to me, I think that if that could become part of this conversation is, is how do we, we have all these things we want to do, there's so much desire for us to do good for the community, but if we have to pick and choose, we should pick the things where we know we can make meaningful change and there's a, you know, data to support that the investments are actually yielding success and we, you know, have metrics for success before we start doing the thing. So I would like to sort of, with any new investment, I think we need to be thinking about all of that data we're hungry for to help us make decisions on future investments. So maybe not exciting to get a new service today or tomorrow, but to like have a better set of data to make informed decisions and to make hard decisions in the future about maybe things that we're supporting that are not giving us what we want. Like maybe there are investments we're making that are not returning, you know, not getting us a good ROI and we need, if we have the data to say, you know what, you aren't delivering this service at this, at the level or quantity that we want, we need to look elsewhere.
If I can just make one statement related to that, so I agree, we do need data, we need to become a data-informed city, but I also believe, since this has been a topic of conversation, you know, has been really highlighted since 2020, that we should have a little carve-out of something that will, of some funds that we will have at the moment we feel like we need to, you know, make a jump. So, you know, to be, you know, a little, I guess, to be a little progressive on this, you know, anywhere between 250 to 500,000 is what I would say, we just have like a reserve for when we do get that data because we could be, you know, knee-deep into, you know, a current budget, done with the, you know, future budget decisions. And I don't want us to be in a position where we just can't move because we don't have the number and we are just getting the data. So that's one thing I would say.
I think, actually, thank you, Councilor Burgess. One of my notes that I had in there was about that, the crime, or not the crime, the criminal justice, not that, but the ride-along, the liaison. And I think I saw that the ride-along liaison program is getting launched, so that's great.
This week.
Do you know, has there been a hiring? I know we were up to two and then we were down to one again, are we back up to?
We're back up to two, yeah.
Excellent. One of the things I had in a note to myself was just to make sure that, and once we have the, I saw too that something in our packet about the civil service, that it looks like we're getting closer to the analyst position being filled.
Yes.
Which is exciting news. But that we don't let our liaison stuff, I'm glad to see these steps, I just want to make sure we keep that in mind too, so we don't let it stagnate because I think that has great potential. I'm really excited to see where this goes with the ride-along component, but if we need to also be looking at like, you know, subsidizing, you know, another position at some point down the road, which, again, now we're having the other half of our conversation from earlier, but as we take a look at where, where those valuable places are that we can, we can do some things, I think that's just something that, that I actually had written down in my notes and had forgotten, so I'm glad you brought that up.
One of the things that occurs to me, and this is maybe less about budget and more to the, I think now is exactly the right time for us to be talking about this because it's not in the middle of like, and here are the numbers, right? So thank you for bringing that up. And I'm reminded also of the way that we began in talking about lost and other forms of revenue, that it was like, we need to have everything on the table. And so I think that we need to enter into the conversation in that way. And it was, I think, you know, you and others had suggested, like, let's, let's bring everything, let's talk about, let's open it all up. And I think that that's the best way that we're going to come as a community to, to looking at where are the synergies, where are the connections that we can make so that it's not all, I'm just thinking of it more at a 30,000 level vista, right? To be able to say, what is going on perhaps with the county? What is happening with the university? What is happening with our police force? What is happening with our mobile crisis? And how are there ways that we can leverage? And how are there ways that we can leverage what's already in place and to put pieces together so that it isn't a whole bunch of disparate atomized solutions, but rather we can come together? And I know that there are conversations that have been ongoing, but I think that if we enter into this conversation in that way and say, everything is on the table, and how does public safety, i.e. the police force, help with preventative, knowing also that they are there in another stead at times, too? And not to say we're gonna, in the same way that mental health can enter into, you know, triaging and crisis moments to help, they're not there for all situations. So I'm getting myself further in the weeds than I meant to. The point being, just, I think in the same way that we were talking about, how do we look at the situation of having, like, we need to figure out revenue. Let's put everything on the table before we start cutting away. I think we need to do the very same thing in talking about, how do we make our community safer with the entities that we have, and how can we put them in conversation and collaboration together? So.
Going into some separate comments, I suppose, much appreciated conversation. I do agree with a need for continued conversation, especially as it relates to reactionary policing versus preventative policing. The first and foremost thing that I want to prioritize is the maintenance of our ability to deliver the things that we are trying to deliver in the status quo.
Essential services.
Essential services, the grant opportunities that we have, the programs that we create, that we have created and maintain in the status quo, I want to make sure that we can continue to do those things. Inclusive of that is things like Fair Free, is a lot of our different climate actions. Knowing that we had nearly or over a million-dollar deficit in the last fiscal year, that is something that is concerning. So I do agree with the conversation that we've had more broadly about, you know, looking at all of the tools to address those problems. Because I, understanding the deficit, understanding our available funds in the future and the really challenging environment that we continue to be in, I think it would be great if we didn't have to deficit spend for anything aside from, you know, capital improvements or other major really transformative projects. I think that there are, there are great things that we can do that for, but in terms of our general operations, I'd like to stray away from that. That really, for me, means understanding, first of all, you know, if we are going to increase our revenue, or if our revenue increases, how much is it going to increase and where are we going to prioritize those dollars? I think of a few different places. I completely agree with the comments about, you know, affordable housing. I would like to see us think big and bold and creatively with, you know, people from all over the country or all over the world about ways that we can try to fix the problem that we have in our community, which is not, is super unique to our community, if we're being honest. It's pretty bad here in the grand scheme of Iowa, but there's plenty of places that are dealing with these problems that are trying to address them. And we have an opportunity, I think, to continue to try to network and try to understand and try to figure out efficient ways for us to be bold, to be creative, and to, you know, address the problem in a meaningful way. So I'm open to a lot of different things in that regard. One of the things that hasn't been talked about as much in this conversation that I really want to prioritize is transit infrastructure. I mentioned it in our last meeting as well, you know, areas of refuge, benches for people, you know, like, physical spaces that aren't just a patch of grass for people to, you know, be at when they're waiting for a bus. That stuff really makes a difference to the quality of life and the accessibility of our public transit across the community. Those are things that I'm really, I really think are important, as well as, you know, bike and pedestrian infrastructure. I think that we can always make improvements to those types of things in the community. And I think in some ways, like, especially with a challenging budgetary environment, incremental changes and improvements can be wise. I'd love to see dedicated bike lanes, but, you know, maybe we can only get some more bollards. That's cool. We'll have that conversation, right? Additional, I'm not going to forget this because I said it last year, too. I would love to see the additional firefighter that we had that conversation about to equalize the number of staff in each of our firehouses. I would say that, in addition to continuing and or expanding our climate efforts, water efforts, air efforts, and, you know, broader energy efficiency efforts, those are, those are my real big priorities. In addition, of course, to the conversations that I've had before, there wasn't anything really said that I strongly disagreed with.
So I have two, one, one sort of want list thing and then a question. I, I know that ARPA dollars are going to be spent up, but we were able to do wage enhancement for childcare, and that, too, that problem is not going to go away. So I would love to be able to continue to look for opportunities to fund that, you know, certainly in combination with the community foundation, but then also perhaps, you know, just looking for grant opportunities. I think that would be a way for us to be able to maintain and hopefully at some point have that as a sustainable program. My question is, and I think I'm not really hearing anything massively different from what we have in our budget right now, other than, and I completely concur, that we need to look at housing as the crisis that it is. And I would say, in addition to, just to make it more fun, so to speak, we need housing of all kinds. We are not at pace for our growth, so I want that to be part of the conversation, too. My question is, are we at a point where we need to start looking at cutting? Because we just keep putting, we're piling more and more on, and yet I do recognize that we're saying, nothing that is outrageous to ask for better bus stops and whatnot. That's part of what a good city council and a good city government wants and provides for their citizens, right? But I guess I'm wondering, within the parameters of the budget as you're seeing it right now, are we in a position where we can start doing? I'd love this, or are we really sort of looking at, what's our status quo? Or do we need to start looking at cutting?
I want to add something before that, before that's answered. Because I heard us say we need to look at all the tools in the toolbox. So when I heard Counselor Dunn talking about the benches and, you know, the covered bus stops, well, we get emails every now and then from people that say, we'll come pay and put these there, you know, they want to put advertisement on it. So that would become the question that us as counselors, you know, or the city, needs to consider. Do we want that opportunity at no cost to the city? They go and they do it. When I think about the affordable housing and the bold step that we have to make, I mentioned, you know, the CIP, you know, making this a part of the CIP. Well, there is an opportunity that if we make this a part of the CIP, it's a, you know, there'll be public-private partnerships where there'll be folks coming to get some money to build. On the flip side of that, we'll be, they'll be adding to our tax rolls. So there are ways to, you know, meet the demands of our community without adding fully.
To the budget.
Yes. And at the end of the rainbow, if we're talking about a CIP where, you know, affordable housing is there, we're investing to get money back on the backend. So I will leave it at that as, you know, there can be a lot said about that opportunity, but I just wanted to mention that there are other tools in the toolbox to get some of the things that council mentioned.
Yeah, to answer your question, I don't think, at least at this point, I don't anticipate fiscal year '26 necessitating cuts. Now, the rollback could change all of that, right? If you have another 8% drop in a rollback, which we don't anticipate, then we may be, it may be a different story. But I don't anticipate that there would be cuts. But if asked to prioritize some of the things I've heard at the table, if you really want to uplift a few of these things, there might need to be offsetting cuts. And that's just a reprioritization of resources. But again, to kind of summarize the memo and the presentation, we might get a 1% bump in our valuation for, on average, the fourth straight year. Expenses are going up four and a half, 5% a year. With collective bargaining coming up, we don't know where that will land with any certainty. And we won't probably when we present the budget to you. A lot of those contracts probably will not be resolved. So yes, we are, we are going to have to reprioritize, which could include cutting if you really want to push a lot of new initiatives forward. And one of the tough things that we all have to realize is, you know, I think someone brought it up earlier, a lot of our partners that we fund, whether it's consistently through aid agencies, or if it's been a one-time support, like Mobile Crisis through ARPA, those dollars, those ARPA dollars especially are running out. There's no ARPA 2.0 coming. So you're, you should expect you're going to get a lot more requests from some of those partners that we fund as those, as they exhaust what they've been given. So my focus right now is those essential services and keeping all those things moving forward, and also making sure that we're investing in the infrastructure pieces that if we don't invest in are going to come back to bite a council and staff down the road. I'd love to tackle a lot of these. A lot of it will probably be dependent on your appetite for additional revenue sources.
I would just like to express appreciation for that and taking that mindset. I mean, that's definitely, I think, as much as I can say that I prioritize, that's the top priority for me is maintaining, you know, what we're able to offer. And I think, Jeff, the fact that you have that mindset, you do that mindset, that is one of the reasons why I think this council is very happy with you. So thank you for that.
I think also, as we're looking at the budget challenges, I know in the last couple of years, we've done a few of those partnerships through contracts for services. And I think that is a model that I hope we lean into because then the entity providing the service knows exactly what they will receive and can be efficient in their administration of that, you know, not having to go ask a lot of different places for money. But also then we know exactly what we are going to spend, and it's easier for us to plan and know what to expect. And particularly, if and when any of those contracts for services can offset any of our own costs, I really hope we're looking critically at that.
I'm going to tie, I guess, maybe I didn't articulate my thoughts clearly enough the first time, but you, Counselor Alter and Burgess did a better job of, I think, tying these things together when I was talking about sort of data and that desire is, okay, we don't need to cut today, and maybe someday in the future we have to. I don't know that I'm prepared to make a decision on what needs to fall away. And sort of having that information at hand to sort of say, who's providing services wonderfully? And I like the model that you talked about, Counselor Burgess, is this sort of establishing the requirements ahead of time, exactly what we're getting, and if it's not provided, well, okay. I think that that's, we might need to set up some guardrails so that in the future, when we have to make tough decisions, it's clearer for us. Because right now I don't know that I'm prepared to point to any one thing and say, no, we'll skip that. So.
All right. All right. So it sounds like everyone is good. You got your thoughts acrossed. All right, we're going to move on to item number five, which is council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees.
Paratransit Advisory Committee met last week. Don is the new director of that. Tom is out. He's retired, not anything bad, happy retirement. They did have some challenges with their electric bus, unfortunately, but it's back and running again now, I think. Just want to say that their challenges, I think, mirror the Iowa City Transit's challenges of just keeping and retaining drivers. So if you see a driver, say thank you and be really polite to them, please.
Any others? Here in none, we are going to adjourn, and we'll be back for our formal meeting at 6:00 PM.